Teaching. Rule call.
Uh, Wolf, Eric Coons.
Here.
Wester.
Here.
Uh, Brown and Volcos are absent as well as student member lesson.
Yep, a couple are out of town today. So thanks, Chris. No press or visitors, kind of a busy night in the district. We've got back to school night or unpacked your back night. So a lot of people on about celebrations of achievement.
Yeah, just one we um recognized and introduced sixteen new teachers to our district this morning. It was an uh, an all um teacher return today. We had a gathering at eight AM and then um after introducing our new staff, we um teachers went had the opportunity to go back to their uh classrooms and just start prepping for tonight's unpack and the orientation of the high school. So.
So I can stop. Um, thanks Davis, focus on learning. Yeah, so uh pre-service days uh this week and into next week. Tuesday, we had uh all our new teachers in um with along with a lot of support from our teacher leaders, instructional process, PLC facilitators, principals. Um, and a few others as well, um just to kind of bring them, bring them in, you know. The goal not to be overwhelmed them, but it's inevitable because of so many things that we do in this building. Uh, some of our goals and priorities, uh but uh just an opportunity to meet with uh those teacher leaders, principals, get to know some of the building procedures, but also engage us. Understanding a little bit about our instructional philosophy around literacy, math. And other things, uh then just not between for them just to work in their rooms during the day. Necessary uh PLC facilitators were in yesterday. It was an all-day event where we covered portrait for graduates, really redefining and clarifying skills that we want to see kids come away with when they graduate, looking at our belief statements. Um, clarifying those and how to be operationalize those which building. Did some work around the learning around student-centered learning and then opportunity for PLC facilitators, there are also plans and gearing for the CLT Thursday work. Today was uh obviously kickoff and then uh really honestly teacher workday for a lot of positive feedback from folks and at our luncheon um with Hills Bank comes in and does that for us and it's well attended. Everyone comes, so just a lot of excitement at us today. Uh tomorrow will be PD and writing will be covered for K five. I cap activities like we're not getting a plan would be happening at a high school level tomorrow behavior. As well as uh six twelve is going to be during professional development together facilitated by teacher leaders. Zach, I think it's kind of heading that up. To support just kind of the next level of work for secondary and really digging into student-centered learning here, right? Additional work around portrait for graduate and uh bring six twelve on board with all, so. Beneficial. That will be guides for the work that they do and that collective work. And of course, uh, on Monday, uh, the twenty-second, uh, it'll be building meetings. Kind of go on over operating procedures in the buildings. We'll also have Johnson County Sheriff's deputies or a deputy in the buildings, um facilitating some meetings in each building, just kind of talk about safe school safety, uh answer questions. And then just kind of a follow-up from our admin retreat. July that would be uh engaging in administrative retreat with principals, myself, Davis. Facilitate by Dr. Stillwell, uh Drake University professor, but also a former superintendent principal. Um, really just starting to dig into that uh student-centered commission admission statement. Again, you're going to hear student-centered learning coming up again and again, and that's one of the things we're really focused on. He helped us, he helped guide us through some of that work. Really trying to redefine what is student-centered learning. How does that um align to some of the things that we're doing in our district, looking at our beliefs? And then kind of our product, uh finalized product by the stretch of their imagination, but really um developing some drafts of what might, how might we want to report to the center commission statement, business statement. Um, with trying to keep it succinct enough where people remember it, where they can say it, repeat it. And it's really focused not on what teachers and adults are doing, but what are students doing, how are we helping?
Our goal is to get that to a point where we're ready to bring the board in on those conversations, get to a point where, okay, now we're far enough along. Now we bring the board in on those conversations to really define it and finalize it. Yeah.
I'd say maybe our approach is really trying to be all encompassing and trying to get feedback from different groups as well. It's a hard process. It's really trying to take what we truly believe and put it into that mission statement and and then determining how the operation looks. What does that look like? What does that look like for our kids? But feel really good about that work. Davis and I are actually debriefing with Dr. Stillwell next week. Just to think about, okay, what's the next step? What's the next level of work? Try and invite them to come on to us and we could just. That process. Development.
What do you think? Knowing their work, I mean, is there something you're like, oh, you know what I mean?
Well.
I mean, you don't understand, it's a world to a new process, it's a world that far beyond world.
Yeah.
Is there anything new that?
Getting calibrated, calibrating within the admin team as far as um our vision and definition of student-centered work, personalized learning. We talked a lot about that and then really looking at like our mission statement. And how it is more adult-focused than student-focused. Yet our missions, our current mission statement is about um, you know, maximizing achievement through exceptional teaching. Well, that that's adult-dependent. You know, how do we make it more focused on the child? Those are some takeaways.
How much is he directing you, right? He's kind of.
It's it's more facilitating conversation, really probing.
He's really facilitating us through a learning process and engaging us in different content that that really aligns with student-centered learning, really taking a look at, well, there's so many different definitions, but trying to take one definition that was all encompassing and working us through a process of, you know, examining what that that definition is, but then also seeing what are other districts, how are other districts playing? Playing that out uh through some examples that they shared with us. And at the same time, I think one of the big things that I've learned and not not so much learned, I've known this, but it always things always fall back or, you know, it can get covered up because you're busy with other things, but just resurface things. And one of the things that kind of hit me hard was this idea of process or a product. This is a process. Where are our, it shouldn't be about the finished product of, yes, we have this wonderful marvelous mission statement or definitions that we're operationalizing. And then they sit up on the wall and we just talk at it versus no, really, what's the learning process that we're going through? To get us to where we want to be and in that process, we'll learn and grow. Um, and become, I think, better educators because of it. And that was what I think one of the messages I was trying to send yesterday to the C facilitator team was process over product. It's not about grades. It's not about just this achievement number. It's about what are we producing for as as students coming out of our system, that they are true learners and engaging in that process. So they learn and grow and become you know, exceptional human beings, exceptional.
Well, it become what we're getting from our community conversations and and staff conversations, become effective communicators, become um respectful individuals, become, I mean, there's a list of those that those traits that we're pulling. Critical thinkers.
Used to be a part of this statement, but.
Yeah.
You don't need.
Yeah.
Continuing to learn throughout your life.
Yeah.
Part of.
I think what, what the activity, you know, Simon Sinek's word, he talks about the gold circle Y. And in the center of the circle, one of the struggles we had was just interesting. Well, so why do you do what you do? Why, why are we? Why do we exist where schools exist? You know, we kind of struggled with a little bit and then we all kind of came to the conclusion what should be in the center of that holes are. Kids.
Yeah.
You know, instead of trying to come up with all these, you know, you tend to come up with all these fancy words and phrases and kids, you just pointed it out to us. It's kids, just put it right there and said, well, it's obvious.
We're good?
Yeah.
Let's see here. Yeah, board committee updates.
Bill Meads and Brown.
Well, Jamie and I put together, we we we're on the waiting list, but we're uh an appraisal will come um of our um facility. And then ISG, um Sue and um Nathan, uh, we've had two, two delays. One was due to COVID. Better now, but they're coming on Tuesday. They're coming on Tuesday to start laying out timelines and a game plan and Sue's the one that does the um focused on the the passage of the bond referendum. And so we'll talk about uh initial conversations about um survey to um questions and probably from a template and um. So I'll start those initial conversations and get the ball rolling.
Yeah, really from the policy side, we're going to go over those in the action items. So does that have anything else? Yeah, we just could get finalized, finalize that now we'll pass them up for your commitment. If you have it all together.
Yeah.
I think with that, we're talking as a uh admin team, we start working with the counselors and start kind of introducing the history. Social, emotional behavior, a team that started the district level and how that's going to branch out into the buildings. And of course, that grant, so we got.
Yeah.
Um, moving on consent agenda. Anything in there that needs pulled out or? Motion by Coons. Sign by Wolf, all in favor, signify by saying aye, aye. Motion carries. See here, action items. So the first one's going to be the second reading of five oh eight point two, and this deals with the open times. We looked at this last meeting. Um, again, I think this is going to be an ongoing deal that we continue to work at and critique, but for now, just to make sure it's compliant and kind of set some parameters or ground rules. Anything in there that stands out on this second read? I think we kind of shorted up with that two to six PM.
Yeah.
Voluntary still there. Yep.
And then we'll put together a doc for the um tracking of uh anything outside that.
Yeah, and I think that'll be good. And that might be something too, instead of waiting till the end of the year. I don't know what you guys think, maybe something right after kind of the fall season is, you know, that wraps up, take a look, see what's going on, make an adjustment. That's how I envisioned it because I don't want it to get lost.
Right.
And you're going to see it, right, with color guard and football and band and everything to play, everything working out. What happens in the fall? That's a busy time and then it might give us a little time over Christmas break to look at this as well.
Yeah, I almost think you need to do it after fall and maybe try to even work in the spring again.
Yes.
Spring sports can be a little different than baseball, starting stuff in January. You know what I mean? So that gets a little.
Yeah.
That's a different, because they can go so early.
Yep.
Different than everyone else.
You get kids doing three seasons at once.
Correct. That's what, that's the part, I think that's the part we're all concerned about.
Yep.
Is this trying to balance that and so.
Well, thanks for everybody's hard work on this. So it's not easy and it's not one hundred percent finished, so.
Um, motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Coons, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, those, none, motion carries. Uh, here's another one here, second reading of nine oh five point one, this is community use of school, district buildings and sites and equipment. So we cleaned this up a little bit and I know Dan brought up some good points of just, we want the community to use facilities. Um, but we also want to protect some of our high school athletes and yeah, again, we want to make sure we're opening the door for kids that want to get in and use facilities, so. Anything else in there that you want to see changed, updated?
We noted that at the bottom too. Dan used the example of the the track or the football soccer field that's ungated, that's not locked.
Yep.
On a Sunday and someone's out there walking the track or running or kicking a ball around.
Right.
Yeah, so.
All good stuff again. I, yeah, I know we as a family use it um
Right.
Just to get the kids to go run around on the track or do something. So uh it's great. It's a nice facility, so. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Yep.
Nine oh five point one.
Motion approve uh code number nine oh five point one, use of school district buildings and site and equipment.
Motion by Coons.
Second.
Sign by Wolf, all in favor, signify by saying aye, aye. Oppose, none, motion carries.
This all, I think this goes the same way.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, but you know, somewhere over checking these things.
Uh, next one, it's going to be number three, board resolution to approve the August twenty twenty-two transfer of fifteen thousand dollars from the general fund to activities uh for purchase of safety equipment per twenty seventeen Iowa Act House Files uh five sixty-four. So again, this has been pretty much an annual deal for us to move that over and um yeah, I think the dollar amounts pretty much stayed the same since two thousand seventeen, so um.
We had within the last five years, we've had one that exceeded twenty thousand dollars and that we just, it was one of those years where we had a lot of helmets and that we needed replaced and numbers increased. Um, this number is actually a little lower than what it looks like. We we um we're kind of reimbursing some um robotics got uh some money earlier that
Okay.
we're we're putting back to safety.
Is there a cap on this? I was thinking about this earlier.
There is.
So there's no cap? So.
No.
That's what I was going to ask, depending on the size of the district or.
I mean, some districts will use it to buy their entire helmets out of it. Um, we do our best just to for maybe some reconditioning costs. Or if we have to purchase a few new ones, but we're we're pretty good shape, so.
I know we spent money over the years for sure.
Mm-hmm.
Getting updated, so. Who to approve, board resolution, um, transfer fifteen thousand dollars to or safety. Two thousand seven, Iowa Acts, House File.
Motion by Coons.
Second.
Second by Wolf, all in favor. Okay.
It's a reservation, Wolf. Yes, Coons.
Yes.
Wester.
Yes.
No names, or pass it to Tuesday.
All right, thank you. Uh, legislative priorities for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Uh, this is that early literacy in Ohio. Teacher recruitment, licensure, local accountability and decision-making. So we've got a pick.
Turn it in, we took whichever were the majority.
So this is pretty much the majority.
This is the majority of the five.
Okay. Um.
And we're, we're turning in five. Is that, this is, these are the five and two, or how many did you turn?
Four.
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 And we asked for five for you guys in case there's enough time.
For sure. So we need to narrow it down.
No, we got four there.
Sorry.
Yep.
I'm like trying to count.
Yeah. Yeah, local accountability and decision-making.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, it it's, some of this is every year, we kind of have the same thing, so.
Yeah.
But I think it's important for our district and every district has its different priorities. I think the new one there, I think I put it on there too, the teacher recruitment and the license, I think that's going to be one for a lot of districts to.
Yeah.
The one I found that they didn't really have on there that I broke it myself is school safe. You know what I mean? It wasn't one there, like. Those were going there.
Yeah.
They usually put those out in the spring, late spring, so.
Right. I mean, and not that. You know, I mean.
It's a good point. I mean, you you talked about buildings and how they're all
Yeah.
set up and, yeah.
I think because of the forefront of what all happened, I I really hope it will be in here for sure, for sure.
Yeah.
All right, so motion to approve the four priorities that we have listed for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three.
Um, motion to approve the four priorities that we have listed for twenty twenty-two and twenty seventeen.
All right, thanks, Shane. Yep, uh, motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Coons, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, none, motion carries. All right, next one, number five is the uh resolution to approve the authorization of it's a grant application for the baseball scoreboard. Uh, so there's some individuals in town uh that are doing a really good job of you know, looking at things that maybe we can uh put some grants out there for uh for improvements. Uh, one of them is uh baseball scoreboard and in order to get the grant to go through what they're looking for is board approval. So once we kind of give approval, then they go through that process. Doesn't guarantee anything, but it just say, hey, we if we're looking for funding, we want to make sure the board's on on the same page as they go down and and start that process.
For sure. I mean, this doesn't cost the district any.
And I do think, well, I know um, you know, some of these community members are kind of using money out of their own pocket or funds to have a professional grant writer to come in and actually write these because it's a, it's a really hard process.
For sure.
You know, it, there's some generous, you know, money on the back end of that, but it's a process and I know that some of these guys and gals have used their own, you know, financial dollars, so uh we appreciate that and
For sure.
again, I think they're looking at opportunities to possibly get a new scoreboard, move the baseball to softball, so everybody kind of wins and improves some of the facilities, so.
Approved the assumption, resolution for authorization and application for baseball.
All right, thanks, Dave. Do we need to do this? Do you want to vote one after uh?
Yeah.
Okay.
So Coons, second by Wolf. And then I do roll for Wolf, yeah, Coons.
Yes.
Wester.
Yes.
Passes to you, zero.
All right, please, roll. And I think they may need just something kind of, yep.
I'll find out who I need to send it to.
But it would be, it would be interesting um to just sort of being lots of, you know, these grants are just you know, the like grants, they don't, like, so we got every grant that they can get, not, these grants are talking to each other.
Yep.
You know what I mean? And there's things out here, especially if people are the department grant writer and do these sort of things, just, you know, working on hands from that. Almost sort of the dad and mom extending the hand, and um, all of this stuff is extremely helpful.
Well, it's creative ways to go out there and first, you know, whether there's advertisement stuff involved or whatever. Um, yeah, I think there's there's certain organizations here that are offering these things and I think it's good for, I mean, it's great for our community members to step up and take this on. So it's 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 a lot of hours and they're finding out even some financial money is involved, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have to send some thank yous if this all comes through.
Absolutely. Well, and you know it's really what's changing around here over time and like, you know, it used to be a lot more parental involvement. And now I see less parental involvement and more just like, well, what I'm looking at.
Yeah.
Looking at it, and it's not actually, I mean, that obviously, both more than that, we it's the power boost and spotlight and all those things. And when you get a group like this, that's when you go out on the, you know, you're obviously probably self-serving in a sense because they wanted this, but I'm all for it. I mean, I want to encourage this kind of behavior as much as I can.
Yep. All right, we should be good there. Informational items, district safety, safety review, that's going to be the except for Monday.
Um, yeah, just wanted to just um throw out that information again. We have all of our administrators have been through Alice training, much of our teachers have now. We've had, you know, a lot of retirement that since then. Um, we review those practices and those principles and the state you know, requires a certain number of tornadoes, severe weather and fire drills each semester. About four years ago, we added to that that we will do uh critical incident or active intruder type of scenario once per semester in each of the buildings. Um, a lot of times those look like scenarios that the teacher will read and have that discussion with class. We try to make those drills age appropriate.
Yeah.
But we do actively do that just the same as a fire or severe weather. Um, we had the opportunity to sit down with seven members of Johnson County Law Enforcement and Emergency Management. Uh, the admin team did, we walked them kind of through our game plan and we really spent a lot of the time, which was interesting, I mean, in our plan, we have designated, if we have to evacuate, the regroup sites, you know, um, are designated, we don't necessarily publish those out, but are designated and you know, we have those discussions. What we haven't had discussion before is once we get to that spot. Now what? I mean, every teacher has a backpack, every teacher has class rosters, every, you know, so we can do, but now what? It was great discussion with emergency management and law enforcement on what that would look like, what their role would be once they got there. Uh, what our role needs to be and and so um it was very informative, it was a good conversation. We're going to continue to have these conversations. We're getting new radios that will have direct channel to them. Uh, you know, Governor Reynolds set aside some money for every school district uh for safety purposes. Uh, we anticipate that going towards additional radios, cameras. And then whatever we may uh need uh or what the law enforcement recommends, but it was a really good conversation that we had. And like Josh mentioned earlier, uh Lieutenant Rudish, who has kids in her system, um has a scheduled time for each uh faculty on Monday. Just to kind of overview conversation and to answer their questions, but again, also let the staff know what Johnson County law enforcement role would be in a critical incident. Just to kind of provide then some reassurances and and um how close by and and what they're prepared to do, so.
Yeah, and uh just from the right, however, you know, there's no prop.
We, that was, that was a big topic. And a big topic. I mean, a- again, unfortunately, the tragedy this last spring was a prop door.
Right.
Yeah, so we've, we've noted that as an admin team and and we've talked to Brian. Uh, Brian was he was there. We, yeah, Brian was there, his buildings and grounds and he, he was part of walking each building, following that meeting with the law enforcement. And Brian knows too, his custodial staff, as they walk, no pro, they, they, if they see a prop door, it's close, they close it.
It might be worth talking to coaches to or, or, you know, it's somebody's department district.
Absolutely, yeah. Well, yeah.
How, how is that when there is the back open for football? So those guys are coming back and forth. You don't have to have somebody there with a key. How, how does that work?
That's it.
All right. I mean, I don't have kids at that age yet to go through that, but um.
And always, every once in a while, I'll come to the building, I'll text you like, hey, the doors were, you know, open each other, by the way, or just.
Yeah.
And I mean, it was summer, it was winter, and they were moving stuff in and out, but
Yeah.
you know, sometimes.
Towel stuck in them or something, yeah.
It's just a whole different.
Right.
How much do we want to communicate to the public on kind of what's being done? I know sometimes we're a little guarded on just saying everything, hey, here's all their plans, come look at them, right?
We'll, we'll put something out. I just didn't know, uh, I didn't want that to be the first back-to-school letter.
I agree with that.
So once we get school rolling, it might be a pay for your information and a memo going out to all district, community members. We have them coming. Um, I invited Chris to come uh tomorrow and I invited um our sheriff. Uh, Sheriff Conkle to join. So Sheriff Conkle and I are going to sit down with Chris tomorrow and just talk about what we just discussed and the relationship. Sheriff Conkle to join. So Sheriff Conkle and I are going to sit down with Chris tomorrow and just talk about what we just discussed and the relationship with Johnson County and Solon Schools and what we've done up to this point.
That's the hard part later in the spring, right? We know there's plans in place. We know, you know, how much attention we put on it, but it's hard to sometimes communicate that. So.
Yeah. That we are voluntarily doing this twice.
Proactive, not reactive.
Correct.
Yeah.
All right. Talking points. Who wants to start?
I'm excited. We've got sixteen new teachers and we had to meet some of them. Excited about meeting some of the other new staff from our house. So lots of new things and exciting. People like are really group going that we met. Ready to start the new year.
I know there was a, we know one that's another teacher kind of went and visited the classroom and I think some of them were really busy trying to get their room and everything ready. So we didn't have quite all of them, but I know some are very, uh, just trying to get everything ready to go. It's a short amount of time and already kids are going to be there tonight. So.
Yeah, for sure. I think the safety thing, obviously, I didn't, we were doing this voluntarily and probably most importantly, I think what you said today is that we all know it, but we forget about it. It's quick. The kids are sick. So many times we, whatever it becomes that they have to, yes, or they, you know, we have this initiative and it really grabbing their perspective, you know, and teaching them where they are. And I think that is very important for the district. And it really, it doesn't seem like it, but it probably is a shift in, in thinking. And not necessarily, don't think about it, but it becomes the cloud. That's exciting because, you know, obviously there are, why we're here. It doesn't matter anything we want to do.
Um, I'll do a thank you for my talking points. You know, it's never easy, right? With all that's going on, you guys have worked your butts off all summer to get this up and ready. We'd hire a lot of new people, not just sixteen teachers, but all kinds of other staff. Chris, you're still waiting on a bunch of registrations. And so again, I, I'm excited for the school year. I've got three in the district and I'm excited that we're starting the year off with not a lot of other distractions. Hopefully that stays that way, but I'm excited for everybody to get back. And again, I know you guys spent all summer and even some of the stuff that you just did where you went out to, you know, go listen to some speakers and collaborate. So thanks for all you guys do and it should be a fun year. Uh, next regular scheduled board meeting is going to be Thursday, September fifteenth, uh, here at the central office. Motion to adjourn. So motion by Coons.
Second.
Second by Wolf, all in favor, signify by saying aye, aye. Motion carries.